I'd like to bring to order the December 8th Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, one equal liberty, and
Counselor Souza. Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Consent agenda. Approval of regular council meeting minutes November 24th, 2014. Receive the minutes from the following boards and commissions. The Tiverton Library Service, Prevention Coalition November Newsletter, and the Arts Council. Correspondence received and filed. Richmond Town Council Resolution November 2014, Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Samaritans of Rhode Island, thank you for municipal donation of $500. Edward Roderick's 19th Sparrow Drive, congratulations and thanks. Tax Assessor, approval of abatements. Approval of revised Town Council meeting schedule for 2015. Town Administrator, distribution of overtime report for fire department. Street Advisory Committee recommendations for Indian Hill Road, Soddy Pond Road, and Old Bogomash Road. Received and scheduling for public input on January 26th. Distribution of Town Council Governance Policy for Discussion on December 22nd meeting. Town Administrator, distribution of VHB Engineering Report Regarding Stone Bridge Abutment. Town Administrator, distribution of Department Monthly Reports for November. Would anyone like to pull an item?
Madam President, I'd like to pull CA-10, please, for a short discussion.
Madam President, I'd like to pull off 4A CA-9, please.
Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and seconded all those four, against CA-9. I mean, excuse me, C-8. Distribution of Town Council Governance Policy for Discussion at December 22nd.
I thought we had 9 and 10, not 8 and 9.
Oh, I thought, I'm very sorry. C-8, 9.
Sorry. That's just, I thought maybe the town administrator might give us a 30-second review, or 10-second review.
30 seconds.
I know the last time I had a conversation about this with, I don't remember which board or commission, someone had thrown up the number that they were at 90 or 95 percent design, and this memo says they're at 30 percent design, so...
That's correct, and that is why this correspondence appears in your packet.
Yeah.
Because I think it's a change of conditions from what most people are expecting to hear. I think it's good news and bad news. The bad news is that the Stone Bridge Abutment continues to deteriorate at a pace somewhat quicker than anticipated. The masonry is almost all shot at the waterline. Water has worked its way, and through tidal action and through probably a bit of freeze-throw action, you've got stones actually forcing their way out and falling down. And the abutment itself continues to list more and more ominously towards the water. So the original plan to drive sheeting on the outside and take advantage of the remaining structural integrity of the abutment is no longer valid and cannot be done because there's nothing behind it. All the fines are seeping out from the interior of the abutment, and you're losing the structural integrity of it. There is good news, though. The good news is if you drive the sheeting to the interior of the abutment and pile rip wrap around the outside, you, A, do not need a barge to drive the sheeting. And while you may not get the same appearance, you'll still get your abutment with rip wrap, and the money that's left over, or that has been saved from not using the barge and all the extraordinary procedures, you can use to get a more attractive rail design on top of the abutment. So instead of going with the concrete slabs, which is the plan, you will have a see-through, you know, metallic design on the railings, all within the existing budget that was projected already for the project. So that's the 30-second synopsis of this report. They are at 30 percent design, but they are still trying to meet their schedule for construction next year. And just so the public is aware, if this goes along as scheduled, first of all, it will come back to the council for your sign-off at 70 percent. Secondly, the beach at Grinnell's would probably be more or less dysfunctional for an entire season as a result. And fishing is likely to be dysfunctional for two years because there will be some, there will be a little bit of need for a barge to work on the very end of the abutment, to finish off the work on the end, because there's no way to get to it. So there will be some tie-up there. But that's the current plan, and I'm pleased to say this report was a lot shorter than my tour of this with the guys on one of those really windy days. And we are moving, we're making progress on getting a very tiny triangle of Rideout or riding land transferred over to us as a result of this as well. So it's all, it may not be the neatest process, but it is going forward.
Is this an opportunity to, I know you, they're requesting to meet with the town for design input on these matters. Is this working?
Hello?
Okay. Is that an opportunity to have an updated presentation to the Stone Bridge Committee, or is this something that we're going to do in-house?
I think you need one, because it's going to look different than they had originally told you.
Right.
And so it would be appropriate for them, when they get a little bit further down the road here, to do this. There's one other small issue. Once that land gets transferred to us from Rideout, we can push the stop sign all the way to the edge of the street, which is what the police chief has recommended. So there are a number of improvements that are ongoing with this, but yeah, they absolutely have to come back to you and give you an update and seek the community's input again before they can proceed.
What stop sign?
There will be a stop sign on the exit.
Okay.
As you exit Grinnell's Beach right now, you have that large, just empty, blank space there, and we won't be able to sustain that. We need to bring a crosswalk to the end of the driveway and a stop sign to stop people. We don't have proper sightlines for the main road.
Thank you.
Motion to accept CA-9.
I move that we accept the report CA-9 from VHB.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all four, against C-10.
Madam President, I'd just like to read a couple of sentences from the Treasurers Report that pertain to something that happened back in May with our financial town meeting. As part of a library bond permitting financing process, the town was required to obtain a current bond rating and then go out to bid for purchases of the bond. The town was issued a rating of stable AA, which I believe is a drop from stable AAA.
Did you read it?
I'm sorry. It's...
Oh, they're not even numbered.
I do not know it, but it's second to the last page.
You're right.
Second to the last.
All right.
Second paragraph. Rating of a stable AA S&amp;P's. Most notable concern was the use of the unreserved general fund to balance the 2015 budget. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and hopefully it won't happen again.
Thank you.
Madam President, if we could, I'd like to have the Treasurer perhaps give us a number on that. I mean, how much more did it cost us when we went out the bond because of the drop in the general fund? I don't mean tonight, but...
Yeah, she isn't here this evening.
I would request that we, you know, so we can just get a number.
All right, Joe, thanks. A motion to approve C-10, accept C-10.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all four, against...
No, I was just raising my hand.
Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Dr. Hoyer, Chair Library Building Committee, update on library construction. Good evening.
Madam President and council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about where we stand on the new library project and to answer any questions you might have. I think everyone who drives along Bogomash Road or near Stafford Road has seen the progress. It's coming along very well. The building is, as a building, complete, and you can see on the library website a picture that shows that, in fact, the exterior is completely done, all of the siding, roofing, and other things. There remains just a small amount of work to be done on the site. The doors are going in this week, and the terraces are being worked on also this week. So what's left is primarily in the interior. At this point, all of the drywall is in, and the finishing is going on, starting in one corner of the building and moving around where it's most advanced in the children's wing. It's really complete. The painting is done, and it's ready for the very final touches and the installation of fixtures. As we move around, about a total of the 75 percent of the building has had its prime coat of paint, about 35 percent has had final coat. So that is moving well. The various systems, the heating and ventilation is in place, and we're going to be shifting over from temporary heating to the building system later this week. In addition, we will see further work and completion of all of the security systems, the electrical work, and the fire safety materials. So that the interior, the building is moving along rather well. We expect to complete or have substantial completion by the end of March and to use the month of April then for the punch list and for the final touches. Most of what needs to be done over the next several months will involve finally getting the finished carpentry in, the fixtures, the floor services, and the equipment. So we are on our target for completion. After the substantial completion has been acknowledged, we will then have an audit of the books by the Administration Department of the State in regard to the Office of Library and Information Services Construction Grant. That will be completed over the course of four to six weeks, and if that is completed before July 1st, the first reimbursement of the state funds will come in the next fiscal year. And so we're in good shape to have that begun. The project is also on budget. We have, as I think you heard earlier, a guaranteed maximal price with a construction management firm, and we are on target to be well within that guaranteed maximal price. So I don't think we are going to have problems either with coming in on time or within budget. Part of the reason things have gone so well is we are working with really outstanding firms. The architectural firm, Union Studio of Providence, has been just spectacularly, has designed a very functional building, but also, I think, a very attractive one. And the construction management firm of B&amp;B Brothers of Middletown has been just all over the project. They are doing a tremendous job of coordinating the 15 different subcontractors and working in sequence the various things that have to be done. So I can report to you that things are going well, and we expect to have the building ready for occupancy in the late spring. Are there any questions?
Did you want to talk about the, excuse me, the artwork now, or...
This is something I could, I'll just bring it up for your attention. One of the things that we have been thinking about for the building is to have a mural in the front of the main reading room of Tiverton History, done by Mika Seeger, who was an outstanding ceramic artist and has done things I think you've seen in the schools here and in the Essex Library. We are looking to find funds to do that, and one of the ways that that may be successful is with a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. That's due very shortly, and it requires that it be submitted by an arts organization and a local government organization, i.e. the town. So we'll need to have it go in under the town's name to meet their criteria. We're working now to work through some of the details of that. The major hang-ups are getting into the federal grants administration system, but if we could do that, we would hope to submit it next Monday.
So you wouldn't need anything from us before you submit it?
Excuse me?
Would you need anything from us before you submit it?
The only thing will be a letter from the Chief Executive allowing a change in the person of contact for the grants administration system, and then when the final grant would be submitted in June, there probably will be need to be a signature from someone from the local government. That'd be all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Forum, Jeff Belile, Tower Pier to William Barton Road.
Thank you. Thank you for taking this time to listen to me. I would just like to bring it to the council's attention. The St. Holland William Barton Reserve, which is not an accepted road by the town, has been repaired, which now puts the town in a position that we have, as a town, have accepted that road because we have now spent the money and repaired it. Anybody, you know, I've spoken to a person that lives on that road. He said anybody can make that assumption and make that argument, and we are looking at trying to force other communities to bring their roads to being accepted, but yet we are making repairs to another road and telling the people in that community that we're going to plow that road when we haven't even accepted the road. You know, if we're going to, you know, be cutting services off to other roads because we haven't accepted it, we kind of need to make up our minds if we're going to, you know, hold true. You know, let's start, let's keep true to our word. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Katz, Public Comments Section, Firefire Budget, Rhode Island Map.
Good evening. I had, as the President noted, I have just four relatively quick comments. The first is on this Public Comments section. I'd like to encourage you again to reconsider and allow public comments during parts of the agenda where they're relevant. It would make for a better give-and-take and finding of information. The second thing, we, the town recently paid, I understand, something on the order of $30,000 for a study on the fire department, and I requested a copy, and it's very, very heavily redacted, and there are a lot of things that I don't think necessarily needed to be. And I'll be pursuing appeals on the redactions as far as legally I can, but it would be a lot easier if you all would vote to unredact large portions of this document. I can understand if you wanted to remove names from anecdotes and such as that, but I think the people of Tiverton should have some sense of what was said. The third item I wanted to mention was, you'll be discussing later on in G7 and 8, the Budget Committee appointments, and I wanted to say again, as I did last week, if you do not appoint the next vote-getter right now after the election, that'll be the first time that's been done in Tiverton, and I think you should reinforce the precedent that right after the election, the next vote-getter gets the job, rather than push the town in another more divisive direction. And John Martin has said he's willing to serve and anxious to, and I think you should approve that. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the, you'll be talking about Roadmap Rhode Island later on today. My organization, Rhode Island Center for Freedom and Prosperity, has spent a good deal of time looking at this issue, and I would encourage you to move very carefully before approving this particular plan. While you're considering it, I would suggest that you take a look on roadmapri.org. I believe their website has growth center plans for multiple towns across the state. So for example, there's one for Middletown focusing down by where the JFK school is. And there are some disturbing comments in these plans, such as trying to send a message to people along that road who own property of what kind of development they should do. I don't know what kind of message that is, but it sounds like a kind of a bullying way to go. In other growth center plans, such as in Richmond, there are pieces of private property included in the plan, and the owners, you know, there's a bike path going across somebody's yard, and they see the map, and they say, oh, I didn't know there was going to be a bike path in my yard. It's really pretty obtrusive. I would also encourage you to look at Land Use 2025 Map, which is on the Planning Division's website. That's really small, so I don't expect you to see it. But what they've done is they've divided the state essentially into an urban corridor and non-urban corridor. In Tiverton, the line would go right up Bogomash Road here. Now, everything north of Bogomash Road would be, it would be considered a urban development area, and they would try to condense the people, the housing, in there. And everything out of it would be reserved, and it would try to make it impossible for people to build on their properties or to expand. It would make the land very expensive. And there are also probably some intention in the plan to make the people on the southern side start to pay for town services that are only available in the northern side. So it would really take the hands, take our town out of our hands. Some people have commented that this is kind of just an airy plan. It's just some suggestions. It's a menu. I've said it's kind of like a menu of debate tactics, and one of the items on the menu is to take out a shotgun. That's the kind of menu this is. In other places, like Westchester County, New York, where the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development didn't like what was going on, a private activist group sued, and there's been a bunch of turmoil in that area, and it's happening throughout the country. So they use a variety of strategies, sticks and carrots, to get communities to get on board. And it's very telling that they see community opposition to these plans as a barrier. When they speak about these things in meetings and in the documents, they say things like, well, if there's this barrier of opposition, they don't say we'll adjust the plan to fit what the people want. They say we need some more education, and to me, that sounds a lot like re-education. The plan also calls for regionalized authorities that would have the power to take over zoning and permitting and such. One town counselor actually in the New Jersey Highlands region said that a similar plan in his area had turned northwest New Jersey into a colony of the state. And also, last note, it does start to raise concerns about eminent domain. In 2008, after the Supreme Court of the United States decided in the key locase that a town or government could take private property from one party and give it to another one for economic development, the state of Rhode Island passed a law supposedly to protect people, and one of the main protections is that there has to be a plan in place before they can start taking your property. Well, Roadmap Rhode Island, I would submit, is going to be considered to be that plan, and it'll be a large protection taken away from people to not have their property confiscated. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. The next two items pertain to the town planner. It's Susan Gillen at Campbell. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move I-3, which is the discussion, the town planner appointment to the next agenda item, and then you'll be allowed to give public comment during that.
I move that we move, take out of order number I, Agenda Item I-3, discussion of a town planner appointment to our current position on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Town Administrator, do you want to go first?
Sure.
I asked for this item to appear on the agenda tonight because the prior council exercising its policy domain instructed me to, on two occasions, to advertise an interview for the position of town planner, and I've completed the second round of that. I timed it accordingly. I wanted the new council to be reviewing my recommendation in the beginning of its term so that it could dispose with the issue one way or the other, and then we could move on and not have this debate anymore. It's not that I'm indifferent. I have recommended to the council before that a planner, if hired, would be put to good use. I continue to believe that. I continue to believe that the type of transaction and structure that we're envisioning for the industrial park, which requires close coordination with Commerce Rhode Island, and the application for an Economic Development Administration grant through the federal government, is a substantial undertaking that has to be shepherded through the process by a professional who has adequate time in the day to do it, along with other projects, Stone Bridge Abutment being one of them. But what I really want is closure, because we have now sought out the attentions of no fewer than, I believe it's 12 different individuals who have applied for this position through two rounds of applications. We now have three finalists. All three are AICP certified and have been through their final round interviews. I would simply like to tell them yes or no, and what I was hoping from the conversation would be to gauge the public support and the council's support for the position or not. There are many considerations that play into this discussion, and there are also standard operating procedures, the way we've always done business, that don't necessarily have to be followed. You don't necessarily have to extend a three-year contract. You can have a one-year contract, and you can be very specific about what those objectives you want reached within the term of that one-year contract before you would even consider extending it. You have many different policy flexible tools to decide whether or not you want to keep this person around or even hire the person to begin with. As we go through a number of budgetary considerations, they are all weigh upon every single one of us. The library bond went out at double A, stable. Debt service in the first year will be $250,000, and the second year will be $340,000. We have ongoing overtime considerations. The fire department, even if we get those under control, they still exist. We have contracts with collective bargaining units. We have a necessary series of repairs in our school buildings. But before we all go down a path of saying we want to save every last penny and throw it against those issues, we also have to recognize that the community's overall growth in its real estate tax base is not strong enough to sustain this level of spending without state aid. Therefore, your highest and greatest option may be to grow your commercial tax base in some way, shape, or form in order to give some stability to the residential taxpayer in town. All I want now is clarity, and if, you know, if you're going to take that step, take that step. If not, then I'll just let these three people know to go their way, and we'll move on to other issues. And when it comes to the industrial park, we'll continue to use a, what I feel would be a highly reactive policy. So when people have an inquiry that comes through Commerce Rhode Island or comes through Town Hall in Tiverton, we'll expend the necessary energy to be highly responsive and to market the property. But the level of attention, the level of energy that you would get with dedicated personnel, I believe, would be qualitatively and quantitatively different. So there are real policy concerns, and I put it to your plate because you are the policymaking body of the town, to simply give me the guidance that I need to know which decision to take.
At this time, I'll allow the public comment, and then we'll discuss it among ourselves. Susan Gill, Town Planner.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name's Susan Gill. I'm a member of the Planning Board, current Planning Board, and Economic Development
Good evening. My name's Susan Gill. I'm a member of the Planning Board, current Planning Board and Economic Development Commission. And I've come to speak to you tonight in regards to the two hiring, or the two processes of hiring a town planner. I think it's very important for the council as well as the public to hear some of the other sides of the coin. We've heard a lot from other people in the town and I think a lot of us that remain quiet have been waiting for the process to work its way through and for it to be fair. I feel very strongly now that it's time to speak up because things need to change. I think that in the two processes, the one that happened in the spring, in the summer, that was a three-month-long process. I think the, the issue with that was that once Kate Michaud was selected, that is when the flags went up, that the alternate, the fact that she was an alternate and also the charter complaint violation was filed. Those, both of those things didn't happen until the day of and several days after following her appointment. And my question, or that I think should be considered, is if it was about the position, why weren't these issues raised clearly, especially the fact that there was somebody put forward as an alternate two months prior when it was announced at a town council meeting? And that's, that's the issue that I see very unsettling in the first round of interviews. The second time, it was when the, the two new appointees to the Personnel Board were on, on Monday night, appointed by the town council. The following Tuesday night, the Personnel Board had a meeting where they opened the applications. The two new applicants were not informed adequately of that meeting, so they were not part of that process. They were a part of the interview process, but I think also what happened was in the summer, they, in July, they were instructed, the Personnel Board was instructed to develop policies and procedures of how to go about their interviewing to make, because things had been very subjective, not written down, and there were no rules or boundaries to how they interviewed people. When those people, the new people were interviewed in November, those still were not in place. So once again, because of HR policies, these are all sealed. It's, it's very, I think it's very subjective and people have no idea what kind of questions are asked, what kind of guidelines are followed, if any, and how these people are actually selected. And then that's the thing that I find very disturbing about the second round of interviews. So what I am asking the council to consider at this time is not to hire any planner at this time. I think the Personnel Board needs to have a review of their, basically of how they operate, how they work. They've been, they've been given instructions. I think for the two new HR people, they'll be getting a lot of guidance and they can improve that. I think there needs to be a level playing field for people that come into this town and apply for a job. And I think what also the town is going to be facing, if you do choose one of these people to hire, is you're not only going to have a new town planner downstairs, you're going to have a new Planning Board Administrative Officer, and you're also going to have a new Planning Board Clerk, because all those positions will then be open. And I think that will lead to a lot of chaos. We're, we're facing the Tiverton Mixed Use Project, the Stone Bridge Abutment and Gas, Gas Station Repair Project, the Commercial Rezoning, and the Comprehensive Plan Updating, which is all critical things that the town planner does. And if we don't have somebody to give us direction on that or somebody that is very unfamiliar with it in all these positions, I think what's going to happen with all the volunteers on the Planning Board and all the other commissions, we're going to, we're going to suffer and the town is going to suffer as well. So I, and if you think it's reasonable, once the Planning Board is, is, I guess, up to where they should be as far as policies and procedures, that a third RFP goes out, I think it is important that we have a town planner. I just feel like these two interview processes have been very tainted and it's not, it's not fair to the applicants and it's not fair to the town. In closing, I have a letter that I wrote outlining a little more detail. I also did a timeline that I researched by looking at agendas and minutes. And I will submit that to the clerk so you can all have that. I also have a letter from Louise Durfee that she very much wanted me to read for the council if you'll allow me to do that. And then I also have, I will submit these, I won't read all of them. I have a letter from Len Schmidt, the former chairman of Economic Development, Stuart Hardy, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, and Carol Gaimond, a Planning Board member. So if you'll allow me to read Louise Durfee's, I would like to do that at this time. First and foremost, this town needs a full-time planner. It is required by the Comprehensive Plan and frankly, fully accepted by the majority of the fair-minded people in this town. How this issue became such an unproductive political issue is beyond comprehension. The council needs to assert its leadership and put this issue to rest. Second, the treatment received by Kate Michaud as interim town planner is a disgrace and a disservice to this town. To say that Ms. Michaud performed her job in a fair and professional manner states the obvious. It is not just the Planning Board and the Economic Development Commission that needed her professionalism, but all of us who needed guidance on issues. Not to have her even considered in the second round of interviews is an absolute disgrace. Leadership requires the ability to turn things around. I hope the council acts appropriately to revisit the process that has damaged this town and find a way to, at the very least, consider Ms. Michaud as a candidate for a full-time position. Thank you.
Members of the town council, my name is Ed Campbell. I've been living in Tiverton since September 2007. I'm a retired federal investigator. I'm a Vietnam vet. And I'm also a member of the Planning Board. I think I'm the newest member of the Planning Board. I've been dealing with Kate Michaud since I, I started. I'm extremely impressed with this woman. She does a tremendous job. Unlike, unlike the people I dealt with in my previous profession when I was an investigator, I dealt with some real lulus. Dealing with her, I get straight answers all the time. I get documentation back as soon as I ask for it. I come up here occasionally to check my mailbox to see what's in there in reference to the Planning Board. Regardless of whether they come here at 11 o'clock, 11:30, 12, 12:30, 1:00, 1:30, she's at her desk. That's like the traditional lunch hour time. If I've ever, if, if I've ever seen a lady not working down there, she might be having like a little bowl or something out of one of those little rubber-made bowls. I think you guys are getting your money's worth with this woman. I'm not sure how much you pay her, whether it's 35 or 50 or 70,000. It's not my bag, all right? But whatever you're paying for her, she's giving you twice as much back in return. So I, I couldn't speak highly enough for this woman. For the time I've been dealing with her, I give her a triple A-plus rating. And to not put this woman in the job, with all due respect, is a real joke. Thank you.
Stephen Hughes, Planning Board Chairman, in just regards to the planner. It says, why do we need a planner? Or what does a planner do? A planner is involved with making long and short-term decisions about the direction of a town, a city, or a village. A planner aims to balance the conflicting demands of housing, agriculture, recreation, development, transportation, and the environment. They're at the heart of the regeneration of towns and cities, taking into account the competing views of businesses and local communities. And in this day and age, they also guide the communities in tackling the efforts of climate change. A planner develops creative and original planning solutions to satisfy all parties. A planner consults with stakeholders and other interested parties and negotiates with developers and other professionals, i.e. lawyers, surveyors, engineers. They research and design planning policies to guide development. They work closely with and attend meetings of the Planning Board and zoning authority, as well as the governing authority of their municipality. They keep up to date with legislation associated with land use. They must be able to interpret local, county, state, and federal legislation and keep their town officials educated to these changes so that they might avoid costly lawsuits and fines. They schedule available resources to meet planning targets. They research for grants to allow municipalities to make changes to the town's structure. They help in the writing of new town codes and suggest changes to codes that have become outdated. They guide the changes of zoning districts with associated uses. They work with the town in developing or redeveloping a comprehensive community plan. They do all this by engaging themselves in research to make sure that they're guiding their town in a proper direction. I'm sure that I haven't included everything that a planner does, but it certainly covers a good portion of the job for those who don't know what a planner does. Hopefully, this will help those who struggle with the need to fill this position. It is obviously important to any town to have an employee who takes in all of these duties. So if this council goes forward with the hiring of someone to fill this position, in my opinion, the best choice for Tiverton is Kate Michaud. I say that because I've worked with Mrs. Michaud for several years. There's not a more dedicated employee in this town. Mrs. Michaud has worked with every Boarding Commission, every department, including police, fire, and DPW. I've witnessed her running countless meetings with attorneys, engineers, state officials, and developers. She always comes across as intelligent and professional. I've never had a single complaint from anyone who has contacted the Planning Board Office in regard to how they were treated or misinformed by Kate. She goes out of her way to give the right answer and if she doesn't know it, she'll research it so that whoever it is gets the right answer from the town employee they called. Kate, in my opinion, is well-qualified to be planner because she's performed all the duties mentioned earlier that a planner needs to do. She's filled this role for 29 months on a part-time basis while handling her other duties. I know that someone raised a question due to the fact she was an alternate in the first round of interviews for the position of planner. But I also understand that one of the top three candidates didn't respond to any messages left for them for a period of several weeks. At that point, I think Kate moved up to third from alternate so that the issue shouldn't be an issue. Kate proved to be the best candidate and was chosen for the position. I hope this council realizes that a very valuable asset in Mrs. Michaud. And to top it all off, she's a citizen of the town. She's one of us. Thank you.
Tricia Hilton, Vice Chair, Conservation Commission. I think that you've heard from a number of us this evening who have worked closely with Kate Michaud over a number of years on planning and zoning matters. And all of us have tremendous respect for her professionalism and her dedication. And especially, one thing that I would like to point out to the council is the incredible value of Kate's institutional knowledge of the conditions on the ground in Tiverton. We are a very unique municipality, even in Rhode Island. Very few municipalities have the number of challenges that we have, where we have a mix of limited public infrastructure, where we have a large portion of town that's dependent on groundwater for their drinking water supply, where we have two public drinking water reservoirs that we're responsible for, where we have quarrying, where we have all of these things. This is an extremely complicated environment for development. And Kate's value and institutional knowledge of what's on the ground and what's there is incredibly important. I'm not sure in the interview process and in the job description whether or not, while AICP certification may or may not be important, one thing that's deeply important to the people who work on a day-in, day-out basis with someone in the planning office is having someone that truly understands the conditions and how to work within those conditions. And Kate has done that over and over. As a private citizen, not a member of the Conservation Commission, what it seems to me here is that we have a person that a great many of us respect tremendously and enjoy working with. The problem seems to be that we can't figure out a way, be it through a series of, of steps that were taken years ago, or steps that were taken recently, to find a way to work through whatever the process is that allows us to fairly compensate Ms. Michaud if she were to accept that position. So I hope that having heard from many of us who work with Ms. Michaud, one consideration would be whether, not whether or not Kate should be the planner or not, because she does that work for us now, but how to fairly and accurately look at what she brings to the table and find a way to compensate her this fair and that is legally sustainable and that all of the citizens in Tiverton can understand and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Comments from the council?
I'm going to offer some brief comments. I've already spoken to a number of people in town and I've given them my thoughts on this and tried to get some input from them. I agree with everything that Mrs. Hilton has said, what Mr. Campbell has said, what Mr. Wiggs has said, what Mrs. Gill has said, what Ms. Durfee has said concluded. And as I understand it, the facts as recited by Ms. Gill are accurate. And if they are accurate, it's an absolute, the process was an absolute disgrace. And I've told that to people. My concern is that I honestly do believe we need someone appointed to the Planning Board. But as I've told a number of people, and I'm still searching for input, I get the impression that the drafting of the Personnel Board articles was done with a purpose. And I think it was done to prevent somebody with any influence in town or to prevent anybody on the town council from involvement at all in the hiring process. The typical example, you've got a crazy brother-in-law and you've been looking for a job for him forever. As a member of the town council, if I had such a person in the family, I couldn't get him a job. I couldn't get him past the Personnel Board. Now, I'm making light of that, but let me give you just one provision under section And it states, under the duties and responsibilities of the Personnel Board, it will determine the applicants to be interviewed. We're not talking about individuals making the application. Before you even get to the process of making a recommendation, and then the recommendation would be to the town administrator, who would then make his recommendations to the town council, as I understand the process. The very first step, I would think, after somebody has made an application, is before you can get a recommendation, you have to be interviewed. And clearly, if you look at this section, even that process is outside the purview of the town council. It's left to the absolute, as I read it, the absolute discretion of the Personnel Board. Here's what I would, if, if Mr. Tights, or if Mr. Wojcicki can convince me that you can make an interpretation of this section other than as I've just reviewed it, and that I would be free to pick anyone as a town planner, whether or not they've been interviewed, whether or not they've been recommended, whether or not they've been forwarded on to the town administrator, and whether the town administrator has made a recommendation to the town council. If you can persuade me that I can pick anybody in this town as a town planner, I have absolutely no doubt at all I would pick Kate Michaud.
Is that a rhetorical question or a real question?
It's a real question. I have reviewed that section over and over again and I would like to know whether or not the town council, despite my, I'm hoping, incorrect interpretation of that section, that as a town council, we do in fact have the authority to hire who we want as the town administrator, I mean, as the town planner.
Go ahead.
With what you have now, you do not. It's kind of like, it's similar to a bid proposal. You can determine if you... You can determine, if you determine that for some reason there was a procedural error that taints the process, you can throw out the entire process, which you did before, and start over again. But you cannot pick someone other than the three that have come through the Personnel Board. So, and I think that's what Mr. Wojcicki is asking, you know, do you want to go forward with this, or do you want to start over and sometime in the future? Now, I've worked with the Personnel Board. We had a long, we had a frank and open discussion of ideas about the role of the Personnel Board, and it definitely, the role of the Personnel Board is, I would agree, to keep political influence out of hiring. But there is a discrepancy of opinion, which is not clear in the Charter, as to whether the Personnel Board's job is to choose the best qualified three people and send them on, or to choose simply the minimum qualified, to look and see. They have to start with the three, but when they go through the initial sort, there's a discrepancy as to how much leeway and discretion the Personnel Board has. For example, some of the Personnel Board members believed that if someone was grossly overqualified, they weren't going to stay here, and therefore, there was no point in giving them an interview. They shouldn't look at that person. Whereas others believe that if you meet the minimum qualifications, then you should move on to that next step of an interview. And we discussed it, we debated it, and we have not met to further resolve it. It's still out there as an issue. But that's a question, and it's not, it's something that will be, in the end, decided by the Personnel Board, from a vote in the Personnel Board. It's not something that I can point to the Charter and say yes or no. It's simply an interpretation of how the process should work, that reasonable people can differ on.
I have a, just a follow-up clarifying question, if I may. Andy, you said that there is no provision to pick anyone outside of the three that are recommended.
Yes.
In the event that the three don't make, because we have sort of a disconnect, and we talked about this a number of times when we were going through the process of hiring a Town Administrator, is because what we wanted to try and express to the Personnel Board were very specific, sort of hard-to-quantify on a checklist or on a, in an advert, those certain things that you want in a candidate. The biggest hurdle was, the Town Administrator didn't work for the Personnel Board. He works for, or he works with the Town Council, and so trying to get those sensibilities across is difficult. And so the question became, well, what happens if they present three candidates, none of them are, after we interview or after we review their resumes, none of them fit our criteria? What is the process then? Do we start from the beginning again? Do we remand it and say, you know, or do we just, we either have to hire from that pool of three, or we don't hire at all?
Well, let's, first of all, let's stick to the planner, because the Administrator can't.
When I say "we," I'll put that in as...
Well, but that is a point. Just as the person, just as this section of the Charter, dealing with the Personnel Board, is meant to remove the Town Council from influence, the section of the Charter that sets forth the Administrator's duties is also meant to remove the Town Council from that choice as well. You're sort of functioning as the U.S. Senate, as far as like an appointment of an ambassador or a judge or something, with advice and consent. So you have the ability, you can reject a candidate, but you can't choose a candidate. It's really up to the Administrator, for the Administrator, for him or her to decide what they want. So in the first step, yes, the Administrator could reject them all. You, on the other hand, would basically be forced to reject them one at a time. And I think the Administrator has come to you tonight to try to deal with that question and say, rather than reject them one at a time, not because you have a problem with the individuals, but because you have a problem with the process, to advise them of that so we don't drag those three individuals through the process, through the next stage, if you have a problem with the underlying process. That's what I hear.
My question is more prior to getting to the council, remove the council entirely from the process. We had a process that, for all intents and purposes, went through the steps, and a candidate was forwarded to the council. At that point, prior to that, if there are, there are candidates in that pool that do not meet, whether it, whether it's, you know, there are specific, in black and white, requirements or suggestions or these checklist items that the Personnel Board goes through, but if there are things that, say the Town Administrator interviews three candidates or four candidates or whatever it is and says, "I don't see any of these people being the right person for the job." At that point, is there an opportunity to go back and revisit the process? Or to say, these four or these three candidates were, and especially if that person who is, who is able to, as a Town Administrator, as the department head, is able to sit in on the early initial interviews? Do you know what I mean?
I do. And I suggested, there's nothing in the Charter, I suggested a process where the Personnel Board would not rank people 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, but they'd rank, here's the top three people. And then they would then rank, here's the next three people. They send the top three names to the Administrator. You're right. He interviews them. One of them gets another job, another one, two have problems, doesn't want to do that, so those three are out. I don't think, I don't think it can be one at a time. I don't think the Administrator should say, okay, one of those three didn't work out, I'm going to go out. But if he goes through all three, and none of those three, because that's what the Charter says, send three, if none of those three are, work out in either because of their choice or because the Administrator, that's his discretion to say, none of these three people are the ones I want for the job, then he could go back to the Personnel Board, and instead of having to go through all the advertising and everything else again, and particularly with some of the lesser jobs that aren't quite as, you know, we're dealing with pools of applicants, firefighters and so forth, larger pools of applicants or dispatchers, as opposed to a very high-functioning policy job like a planner. But he could go back and say, send me the next three.
Okay.
And then he would get those three, and he'd go through, and so forth, until you get to, if he got to it, and at that point, or if time has passed, then it's, okay, we've got to re-advertise and do it again. That was my suggestion, because I do not think that the Planning Board should be usurping the Administrator's role in deciding who's 1, 2, 3.
Personnel.
The Personnel Board, I'm sorry. But clearly, they do rank the top three. So if they can pick the top three, I think that it's implied that they could pick the next three, as long as they don't rank them 4, 5, 6. They just say, here are the next three, why? And the Administrator can't pick and choose, say, well, I'll knock off one because I know number four is who I want. He's got to deal with all three that he has before he can go back to them and say, send me the next round.
And there's no, I mean, we talk about this, three and an alternate, but there's no policy, or there's nothing in the Charter that actually describes that. It's just something that is being done, kind of.
That's correct. And at the time, my understanding was that it had been done before, that it was the usual custom, which, which I believe the Administrator did too, which is why the first round did not, to me, seem to be a legal problem, since, as I said, it's, it's rather bare-bones in the Charter, and if this was the usual custom that didn't contradict it, then it wouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Tytes, I really want to direct one more question to you, just as a follow-up. I agree totally with you that once they've had the interview process, it would seem to me that in some fashion, they've all been assessed, and in the fashion against they've been numbered. But my issue even goes back before that. That is, the provision of the Charter makes it clear that as step number one, unless I'm missing something, the Personnel Board seems to have absolute discretion as to who they would even interview.
That's true.
So just, with all due respect, you've answered a question for step number two, and that I agree with you. Once they've had the interview, I think I can pick anywhere. I don't know what the process would be. I could keep simply saying, no, I don't want this person, I don't, I want to see more people, I want to see more people. So long as they've been interviewed. I guess my question is more specific, and that is, what, what authority does a Town Council have to compel a Personnel Board to actually interview someone so that they're on this process?
One second. I do know that the second process was in question, and I did talk to Matt about it, and you did speak with the Personnel Board about it, correct?
Well, I say, and let me defend the Personnel Board for a second. Their charge is, I believe, to determine those candidates that are minimally qualified, that meet the terms of the advertisement. If there are qualities that are preferred but not required, you know, they look into that as well, but they, as long as you meet the minimum qualifications, you can get a screening interview from the Personnel Board. And at that point, they recommend three names. I said I'm on this process like I did the first one, and I'm very comfortable with how it came out. We were sent three finalists who are all eminently qualified to serve in this position, if it was offered to them. I have my own rank ordering of the three based upon a final round interview and the questions that matter the most to me. Throughout the entire process, there have been two things that guide my decision set. One is the question that the Personnel Board asked of every single candidate who interviewed in both rounds. Tell us what's going on in the town of Tiverton and discuss the planning policy ramifications of the different issues that are going on in our town. And if the answer was deer in the headlights or stuttering through a very general answer, then that person did not impress me as the potential appointing authority. And anyone who had a significant advantage in answering that question came across as very strong. I know from my own background in economic, as an Economic Development Director, the more detailed knowledge you have of the community you represent to the outside world, the more convincing your presentation. And I tell you, any number of businesses that I attracted to the city of One Sockit simply by knowing where the leak was in that building, and where the lightning rod is, and where the underground storage tank used to be and all the rest. And so through the first process, that carried tremendous weight with me. But I would not argue with the legal analysis that an alternate was an alternate. And if it was the will of the town to part with something it had done in the past, in my own process in this hiring for Town Administrator, then that's fine. If we're going to stick to the letter of the law, then let's stick to the letter of the law. And I'm fine with the way the Charter is written with sending three names, because my goodness, it's a pretty sizable universe in the professional world to have three names to pick from. In the second process, in the second time through, we may agree or disagree as to who is minimally qualified in the Personnel Board's decision upon who to interview, but I believe they should be given credit for having picked three names that were very, very highly qualified for the position.
And the absentee of the, and the absence of the two new members you didn't, you don't think made a difference with opening up the applications? Because that's one of the questions.
Yeah, I almost want to kick that over to the solicitor, because to me, look, I'm kind of old-school when it comes to my personal belief system. If you are a member of a board or commission with any decision-making authority, whether you're newly tenured within the last 24 hours, or you've been around there for 24 years, you deserve notice. And notice is not effective if it is not given to you personally. Every member of a board or commission must be given personal notice to appear and participate in the meeting. That's, I agree with that on Robert's rules. But to say that the meeting was posted, look, I kind of felt everybody involved. I mean, the only way to play this straight is to say, I think the newfound members should have known that there was a meeting, and I also think the chairman should have called the new members and notified them. And I'm ashamed to say, I don't think either thing happened.
Can I, okay, this is really dear to my heart. Being on a Personnel Board for 12 years before the Budget Committee, so I'm kind of well-rounded, physically and mentally. So here's my opinion on this. The Personnel Board's procedures are not flawed, and they're not flawed at all. Their job is to set three members from the applications that are received, and I want to read not just one sentence out of a book, I want to read you the whole process, like Mr. Lambert tried to do. The Personnel Board shall review all applicants, determine those applications to be interviewed. So yeah, they are going to, if they get 15 applicants, they're going to narrow it down. And my process was, I would interview half of what came in. So if 20 applications came in, 10 people would get interviewed. And you do get people who were tax assessors, and I'm going back some years, and Mr. Tytes, you remember, because we had a meeting about this when we were younger, about these three people being forwarded to the Town Administrator. You have a town assessor, a tax assessor, who needed to send out an application to collect his unemployment, so what he would do was send his application to you, and you're looking for a truck driver at the DPW. I mean, come on. Those are the ones that you're really not going to interview. You know, so you can say that, hire qualified people, we're getting interviewed. You're correct, they weren't. But they weren't going to take that job anyway. They were just getting their applications out there because they needed to. For those applications to be interviewed, be responsible for the verification, the accuracy of the information on applications and checking references, including former and current employees. General provisions, hiring of all personnel, including full-time, part-time, acting, temporary, seasonal employees, shall be done through the Personnel Board. The applicable department head shall be invited to attend interviews. If you want, I'll invite the department head to come in, and DPW, you're looking for a truck driver, and you want to bring him in, that's fine. Assist the board in questioning applicants and take recommendations, make recommendations. Employees shall be based on merit and comprehensive exams, when applicable, and shall be free of personal and political considerations, and this is where we got to stay out of it. The town is an equal-op employer and shall not be discriminated on a basis of sex, race, creed, or national origin. So when we read something, let's please read it all, not just one sentence.
If I can respond, Mr. Perry, I wasn't trying to read one sentence.
You were trying to get it.
No, I would not. I was trying to explain as clearly as possible that despite the statements that we heard from the witnesses, Mrs. Hilton and the others, suggesting the appointment of Kate Michaud, that under the provisions, and I'm not, I'm not even critical of these provisions, I'm simply saying that under these provisions, our discretion is very limited.
Very limited.
And we can't simply, that's my point, that's exactly my point. And I was trying to explain why I turned away from Kate Michaud.
I think he's agreeing with you, though. I think it just didn't come across that way.
And I'd like to get back to Mrs. Gill, just for, that second round of applications, the two new people that were put on were Mrs. Rodricks, and I believe it was a Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
She lives on Warren Avenue. Mrs. Hughes was away. She wasn't even here for that whole process. She had a family, a family emergency out of town, and she wasn't even here for that week. So she was totally out of the picture, no matter what. Mrs. Rodricks, I believe, and husband's Mr. Rodricks, who was the chairman of the Town Council at that time, who made the appointment, if anyone should have known there was a meeting on Thursday night, I would think the Town Council president should have known and said, hey, you know, you got a meeting tomorrow, you know, Thursday night, you better attend? I don't think it's the responsibility of the chair. I didn't get a phone call tonight from Aunt Denise telling me there was a meeting tonight. That's my responsibility.
It's a little different.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Joe.
I wanted to ask, your original question to the council?
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I'd like to respond to his original question, if I could.
Sure, and I'm going to ask, what I really think the original question is, is does the Town Council support the hiring of a planner?
Yes.
The new council that's here?
Yes.
So I'd like everyone to kind of, well, we can still, we can discuss.
Yeah, well, I'll first say that I also sat on our, you know, Budget Committee with Dave, and we did look a lot at, a lot of information to try to determine whether or not we needed a full-time planner. And last year, we determined that we could get away with a part-time planner, because the workload didn't seem...
The Budget Committee.
And on the budget, the people voted for that.
And on the budget, the people voted for that. But going forward, you know, I'm a big believer that maybe we should ask the town, I mean, you know, if we're going to have a planner, then it has to be a line item in the budget that has a salary for the planner and pays for the benefits and everything else. The idea of hiring a planner and then telling the people they have to pay for it, in my opinion, is putting the cart before the horse. So if we are going to go forward with hiring a planner, the people have to approve the dollar amount. It's that simple. It's that simple. So again, this year, if this council votes in the budget, you know, to hire a full-time planner, it'll go to the Budget Committee and go through the process. Other than that, I mean, I would like to see a separate question on the ballot, but I think it would kind of, you know, it would kind of complicate it, I guess, so, but follow the process.
I'd like to comment on this for just a minute. First of all, there was a, there's a lot of argument over this, and we know there was a charter complaint over this. There is a line item that says Town Planner. The Budget Committee gave us enough for a part-time planner. But this council and the charter, we believe that the charter said that we can put money into line items in order to set policy what we believe in. Now, if we didn't move money around, the fire department wouldn't be functioning, and there's many other things that wouldn't be paid for if throughout the year we didn't move. My opinion is, we need a Town Planner. My opinion is the people voted to put a Town Planner in as a line item. The money we, the Town Council's discretion at the time, was we needed a full-time one, and moved money into that account. But the line item is there. The people did vote for a planner, regardless whether it was full-time or part-time. So that discussion, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's my opinion. I do believe in a planner for all the multiple reasons that people have said. I've been here for two years. When I first started, I wasn't quite sure. I've been convinced by watching the zoning and the planning and everything that goes on here, that we need a coordinator of all of that. And so I am totally for a planner.
Can I just please?
Yeah.
I didn't say that the council didn't have the money around. Okay, I think we need it, the council does, and there are times. But we sold something to the town, and we told the town that it was going to be a part-time planner, probably a consultant, that we would hire on a part-time basis to fill in the, when we needed a planner. Okay? That's what we sold to the town.
Unfortunately.
That's what we sold to the town, and that's what the people expected. So I believe, that's just my opinion on this. We need to go by what we sold to town. We can't be telling, saying one thing and doing another.
Unfortunately, I don't think a lot of people really pay attention to all our meetings. I think they looked at the line item. The Town Council and Budget Committee decided that a planner was appropriate. And, you know, by walking around town all the time, I don't think people absolutely pay attention to things as much as some of us do who are involved.
Madam, I'm sorry, just one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody on this body and people at home and in the audience that for six years, we had a full-time planner in the town of Tiverton. It was a full-time budget line item, somewhere around the $65,000 range when Chris Spencer left the town. And through action of the Budget Committee, that line item was reduced. I think it's a little, I think it's important for us to remember that that's, that's how the, this thing came to be. And we, for a time, had a vacancy, and we put an interim in when Kate Michaud, and up until recently, have had someone in the position. I think there's a point at which this town has to make a decision and has to stop shifting the burden of decision-making onto people who are voting one decision on a budget, on a bottom line, or the other. I think, you know, as a voter, it's insulting to hear that what my vote on an absolute budget was can be interpreted as 50, or 60, or 100 miniature decisions that carry weight throughout the process. I don't think that's what that is at all.
Mrs., Madam President, would you entertain a motion at this point?
Oh, well, I would, I'm just doing a general consensus on whether or not this council supports a planner. Brett?
Still got some things to talk about.
Dave, would you like to?
I just wanted to make a comment on, being on a Budget Committee for the last 16 years, and the last two years, we did, there is a budget line item in there for a planner, absolutely is. And there is money in there, and that last two years have been $20,000, which doesn't mean that the Town Council can't find some funds somewhere and, you know, fund the rest of it. And for two years, I was totally opposed of a Town Planner. I am now convinced, over the last probably eight months, nine months, that we definitely do need a Town Planner. So I will be voting for a Town Planner. But I want the right planner. I want the right person.
Peter, you haven't said.
No, I'm still up in the air as to what we should be doing here. Again, I was under the belief that the voters chose a part-time planner and had a budget for a part-time planner. I believe that Kate Michaud has done a fantastic job in her role, but at the same time, the budget has a $15,000 budget, and I believe that you, believe that you can move money around. But again, I, at this moment, think that there's only a budget for $15,000. Come next budget, if there's the budget in the Budget Committee and the Town Council can reconcile a bigger budget for a planner, then I'll be going with the will of the people. But right now, again, the funds were only there for $20,000. But I also believe that Kate Michaud did a fantastic job, and I think there'll be a loss if she is out of the Budget Committee, out of the Planner Department.
Mr. Lambert?
I support the appointment of a full-time planner.
Mrs. Shabbat, you'd like to come in.
Well, I think we had, when we had Mr. Spencer, we had a difficult situation with that example of a planner. The planning position is very important. The planner has to interact with many committees, has to interact with the Planning Board, has a lot of responsibility. So personalities do get involved in that, and sometimes it's hard to do, go through the interview process and be able to determine whether a person's personality will fit with each board commission, and everything will be happy and hunky-dory. That said, I have to agree with Council Suzer and Council Mello that it was in the budget, it was an expectation for a part-time planner or consultant. And I know during the budget process, it was heated argument to come to that decision. And if the next budget process recommends, the recommendation would be from the Town Administrator, that there be a full-time planner, then I would agree with that. At this point in time, I, I'm not sure that we have endless funds to fund overtime and all these other little things that come up that we need to respond to and, and provide the money. So at this point in time, I'm, I'm still seeing a part-time planner in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pellot.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I have three little check marks that I want to talk about briefly. The first is one of process. And I've often said that, at the council, anecdotally, that I hear people say frequently, or had heard people say, that their phones rang frequently and they got emails frequently. And I always joked who those people were because my phone never rang, and I never got emails from constituents. I very rarely do. But this is an issue where I have gotten a considerable amount of traction. I've received a number of emails, I've received phone calls, and I've actually received a number of requests to meet privately because people are sensitive to, this is a sensitive issue, and, and want to be heard but also don't want, don't want there to be too much of a fuss about it. And the process, I think, is, the component of the process is, there was a process that happened, the first round, we'll call it the first round. There were people who thought the process was suspect, and we threw it out in favor of doing it again. And I think the same basis exists today for the second process, that people that have talked to me, you've heard some of them here tonight, they feel as though it is just as suspect and flawed as the first go-around. And I'm sensitive to that. While I like to make progress, I don't like to do it when we're only half sure that we're doing it above board or we're doing it without question. So that is my first, my first bullet point. My second is the very real, on-the-ground component of our personnel matters in this town. And having a process that puts in jeopardy the assets that we have. And I spoke to this the first meeting, I'll speak about it again, or about a month ago, I'll speak about it again. When we make our employees pawns in a political or personal or whatever machine, it's totally unfair, it's totally unreasonable, and we cannot be surprised when they decide that their time is better spent and their energy better spent elsewhere. And I think if this is how we plan on treating our best employees, and the people that work for this town that provide absolutely fantastic service, then the rest of them don't have a chance. And if that's where we want to go as an employer and as a community, I don't want to have any part of it. If, you know, speaking frankly, if we lose Kate Michaud because she feels like there are people who are out to get her, and the council, and the administrator, and the town don't have her back, I might move someplace else. The next is a progress bullet point. Happens to be three Ps, which is illiterative, I suppose. And it happens to do with the process that we go about making progress in this town. When Chris Spencer left, the time between his departure and now, and an ever-growing number of days, that's not progressive, in my opinion. An interim position was a stopgap measure. We talk about being friendly to business. We talk about making our land use restrictions and land use regulations more appropriate and more reasonable for everyday people. And then we drag a process out, and we punish leadership or punish vision for the future. And frankly, the reason that this council, as the last council, was so strong-headed about this is, being on that council, I was frankly sick of being held hostage by the Budget Committee and then being told by them that I made them do it. It's not a system that works properly. And I'm glad to see that Dave has, has, you know, has had the experience that has changed his mind from the time he was on the Budget Committee till now, that he does appreciate the need for someone in that position. It's frustrating when for two or three years, this council, the Administrator's Office, the Planning Board, Economic Development Commission, have all said that this position is absolutely critical to the progress of the town of Tiverton, whether it's economical, by economic means, by land use means, or any other. And to be ritualistically told, I know better than you, and then told that that's what the town thinks and wants, is a, is a tough pill to swallow. I think absolutely there's a, a need for a Town Planner in this town. I don't think anybody thinks I think any different. Full-time Town Planner is essential, somebody that staffs that office on a daily basis. I, I remember being interviewed years ago about the Planning Department and Economic Development, and I said it was my hope that someday we would have a Planning and Economic Development Department because those two things don't exist without one another. It's, it's absolutely essential. Anytime we talk about competing with other towns and other cities and other states and our own state, and we look at the numbers and we look at the statistics, we appreciate those people who have done that, that we are lagging and we are behind. And, you know, I have to, I have to agree with the people who have spoken tonight and the people who have contacted me privately, that this process is just as suspect as the first process. And until we can get this right and do it in a way that is respectful and responsible of both the people that are involved in the process and the people that it is aimed to serve, and it's not just the 100 or 200 people that make their voices heard on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, there are 15,800-plus people that live in this town, 11,000 voters. We should, we should certainly consider that when we think about these decisions.
So is, excuse me.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I just want to make one comment because I think Brett has a very good point as far as the process goes. When you work in the private sector, you have a pool of employees and you have a growth path for them. You talk about their career and you plan out their, their, their future, what they need to do to get to the next step. And I think maybe this is the case with, with Kate, in that the career path she wants to go down is to planner. And she's worked hard to get that position. At the same time, we are constrained by the charter that says we have to go through a Personnel Process, Personnel Board, and go through a process. But there's no process to say, there's, what we want to do for our, our employees is to offer them a career growth potential. It could be similar to maintenance, maintenance person is training to be the head maintenance person, but it has to go out for interviews, and somebody else might get it, even though they've worked 20 years to, to reach that position, they don't get it because somebody else gets interviewed and gets the job because they're not the top three. So I think the charter lacks that career growth requirement for employees. It doesn't, it doesn't offer any, any way to have a, like a probation, probational period or, so that the, the person trains into, into the job. It, we're constrained by what's in the charter. I don't know any easy way around that. But I think it, it's, what you're basically saying to your employees is, you don't have career growth potential here because everything has to go out for advertisement and has to go through this process. And that's, that's discouraging, and I can see where, where Miss Michaud would, would be discouraged at this point because she's tried to go through the process now twice and has, has not been successful, even though she has put her heart and soul into, into training for that position.
Can I just make one, one clarification? The, when we talk about this process, she was successful. We, we approved or offered her the job, she accepted, we accepted, and then we rescinded that. So I would suggest that she... So I would suggest that she was successful in the first round. And I think that's an indication of who the chief executive of the town and her boss would, um, when, when faced with four candidates picked who he thought would have been the most appropriate and the best qualified. That's just my opinion.
Can I have a follow-up question, please?
So I want to kind of wrap this up.
It would be to our town administrator. Have you determined the number that we'll need to hire a planner? And I don't want to say it in public, but have you come up with a number that you are going to go forward perhaps in next year's budget? If we decide to go forward with a full-time planner?
Yes and no. Not to play the part of Artful Dodger, but the three candidates that present themselves as finalists are in different positions in life, and I believe I could drive a, a better bargain with at least one of them than with the other two. That being the case, I would estimate the salary range here between $55,000 and $65,000.
And that's, I'm sorry, that's for a qualified planner?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes. It's certified.
I just have another short comment, like Mr. Pelletier, that wasn't that short. I don't think that the personnel process was flawed at all in the second round, not at all. Three names were submitted. That's what was supposed to happen. I think this process is being flawed, because the name of Kate Michaud keeps coming up. And how is he going to make a determination on it? Well, she's not even, she shouldn't make the top three again, which she didn't make the first time around. But having that name come up all the time, that's a charter violation. I hate to say this, but employees shall be based on merit and competitive exams and shall not be free and shall be free of personal and political considerations. And what we're doing right now is putting a name out there. How about the other three people? What are their names? Do we have them? Then I'll look.
I do feel that the public needed to express.
I don't think so.
But I, I don't think the public expressing it is a charter complaint, because I think that, um, they just wanted to, um, I don't even know.
At least, it sounds like, again, that we're not going to get a town planner unless it's.
Well, that is my next question.
It's not the process.
And that is my next question.
That's not the process. It is not.
I, I think I need a motion to say whether or not we feel the second process was flawed, right? That's what I was just talking, whether we throw out the second, well, we throw out the first.
Let me, let me just clarify. Very often when we do things here, it's not because we feel a process has, was flawed or was tainted, it's because people in the public have the impression that that is the case. The, the impression of impropriety is just as bad as actual impropriety. And so when people, our constituents and voters in the Town of Tiverton and taxpayers come forward and say, hey, this didn't, this didn't smell right, we took that and we said, okay, let's start all over again. And now we have another process and we have more people that come to us and say, hey, this doesn't smell right. I'm not sure why one person's opinion is less valid than other people's opinions. And that's all I'm saying, that people, it's, it's, it's obvious that people have come to us and asked us for, or, or just not asked us, but have said that this process doesn't look right. That's all I'm saying.
But Dave is right. Why did they feel that this process didn't look right? Because the applications weren't opened by the entire Personnel Board? Is, is, is that the reason? Like, what is the reason?
They've spoken, some of them.
Well, I know, but is it because?
Synthesize what everyone's thinking.
Right, but what I'm saying, is it because Kate Michaud wasn't chosen as the?
That's what it sounds like to me.
I'm just asking.
Totally disingenuous.
It's not totally disingenuous. I'm just asking a question, because then all of a sudden, the third process is not going to be looked at correctly, because the post she does get picked now. It's getting to be a problem. It's, it's.
Madam President, can I offer my view? My concern with the process is that the decision, which is the threshold issue of interview, was decided by a two-to-one vote. That's my concern with the process. My suggestion, however, is simply to move on, based on the conversations I've had with You know what the process has been the first two times. Why in God's name would anybody accept, expect that the process is going to be any different? The outcome is going to be the same and we'll be going into a fourth process. As far as I'm concerned, accept the reality of what happened, it's unfortunate, let's move on. The fact is, she was not interviewed, and as I understand this charter provision, it makes it clear that we cannot consider someone who has not been interviewed. That's it, period. Dave, if you disagree, you're.
Totally agree with you, totally.
So what I'm asking is, what is the next step? As I heard this council correctly, there's four people for a town planner and three against during the discussion. So do we have Matt bring forth the three applicants at the next meeting?
Pick about one, he's already picked somebody.
Well, the one applicant, I'm sorry.
You can only bring in one.
Right, I'm sorry. So we need.
I'd like to take a vote.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, take a vote on the town planner.
I'll second it.
Well, it has to be more specific on whether we have Matt.
Have Matt bring forth a name for a town planner.
Is that okay? Brett, do you want to?
What is the motion again? Can I take?
I should have Matt bring forward a name for the town planner at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting is specific enough.
Do I have a second?
I second it for discussion. I just, just want to be on record that I feel as though we're putting the cart before the horse, because we haven't got funding to pay for this position yet.
Thank you, Joe.
Which is a fair point. Where, um, are you confident we are able to fund the position if we do hire someone?
I'm, I'm going to bring you back to the earliest part of my conversation, which is, this policymaking body needs, by doing this, you're telling me that you have prioritized this position to the point, that you're willing to have the name come forward and appointment be suggested to you in light of all of the other financial considerations that face the town. To me, that is significant policy guidance that I shall not do on my own without the advice of the council. Because I don't make policy, I implement yours.
I agree, but you administer the budget, and so I'm looking for more of a financial guidance than.
What do we have in that line item right now?
In the 50, you have 20, to start the budget year, I noticed a treasurer came in. I don't know what our year-to-date is, because there was the split contract. It's less than 20 and it's more than 10. I will tell you what I personally would do, not everybody's going to like this idea, but I would suggest we remove all consulting dollars from either the Planning Board or the Planning Department in order to be the first reservoir of funds to pay for this position. We need to hire someone who is qualified enough to do the job on his or her own and not go outside for any other work. I believe that's possible, not only possible, but likely, that we have that person. I think all three finalists frankly meet the bill. And I used to be a consultant, so it pains me to say, there are good ones and there are bad ones, but what you really need is a very strong employee first and foremost, and we shouldn't sacrifice the strength of the employee in order to buy consulting services. At that point, at the 55 to 65 range, fully loaded, let's make assumptions about pension, FICA, health insurance selection, dental insurance selection, the position will cost the town somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000 to fill. Most of the problems that I would cite the town has to cope with going forward in the budget process have six digits, not five. So, yes, it's plausible, but in instructing me to fill this position, you will be taking those additional dollars off the table for any other use down.
So we're only talking seven months at this point, am I correct?
Correct.
Right, and as you heard me say before.
Not even with.
Five months.
Right, five months.
And there's $11,680 left.
From the last.
In that line item, 5100.
Through October, correct. Is that what that report, yeah.
So you're looking for half of 70, which is 35 minus the 11, you're looking for $24,000.
Looking for $24,000 for this year. And, you know, I'm also going to throw this out to you. You don't have to do a three-year contract. You always have. It does give potential employees a certain amount of security, noting they would have six months of probation and then be able to vest into a contract with some stability in their professional lives. But you, frankly, you don't have to do that. You can offer a one-year, and the budget would reflect that. Because I frankly believe the projects are discreet, and I keep coming back to this. To me, this is a practical problem. At this point, I have, I believe I have a fairly clear mission as an administrator, is to find a way to grow the commercial tax base of the town that the town will accept as palatable, and there's a lot more support. I think there's a lot less controversy around the industrial park than there are around other proposals that have come before the town, because the town owns that land, needs to sell it, needs to recognize tax revenue from the buildings that are built upon it. And I would charge this individual specifically with spending their time doing the grant applications and marketing that needs to be done to make that project a success. And if they can't carry that off, then they shouldn't be here at all. And we'll have to revisit the entire approach to the thing, and it wouldn't be for lack of trying, the town's been trying to deal with this industrial park for a long time, but this is, would be a different approach to it.
I have a motion on the floor. Nancy, could you read the motion again, so everybody's clear?
To have Matt bring forward the name for a town planner at the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Your point was seconded by.
By Joe. All those in favor? For three. Public hearing and public presentation. Advertised public hearing, Secana River Outfitters, Zero Main Road, corner of Main and Haskin Road. Um, Haskin Road. Request approval of indoor shooting range license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Planning Board recorded decision on developmental plan review. Shooting made, shooting gallery ordinance, and letters received regarding license. Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Madam President, before you begin, um, there were some. There were some typos in the ordinance as originally produced. I know you have a copy in your packet. We have since corrected the typos and filled in the missing dates. And also, there was the question about where the word "indoor" should be added, so that's been added to a lot more than to make clear that this applies to indoor. I don't think it requires a vote or anything, there's simply Scrivener's errors coming from the public hearing and the vote you made the night of the public hearing. But if you're considering this, I'd just like you to have the most up-to-date copy. I think there are extras if people in the public want them. So if I could just pass this out. There's no changes of any substance to it.
Is this different than what we have in our packet?
Just slightly, and you'll see, there are.
It is, in trying to get at least some backup for the, in particular, the new council members, because you have a copy of the corrected one. We put a copy of what we had and it wasn't the corrected one.
I think you might need more.
You need one?
One more.
One more. I want my own. All right, so you made it indoor specific.
That's correct, which is what the council had voted on.
Right.
But we had only changed that in a couple of places, and now we've changed it in a lot of places, so there wouldn't be the confusion. And we added the reference to the particular version of the shooting range facilities that would be the 2012 edition. That's basically what we did. And we capitalized some letters other places, and there's no, there's no substantive change to it.
Ms. O'Callaghan, would you like to say something, add anything?
Yeah. Where we left off, six or eight weeks ago, was we were waiting for my planning review from the Planning Board to be approved before my, um, uh, my license would be issued for the indoor range. Everything that you guys asked for has been put up to date. The Planning Board letter has been registered. The zoning, there was no zoning issue. And that's, that's it. Everything that was required of me before you guys, you know, issued me. The potential license, I mean, I know you can't issue me a license, because there's nothing standing there yet.
Now, I'm the Planning Board recommendation, it says outstanding items were reviewed and including, and it lists four items. Did those four items get done? Do we see that the right dot? They made an approval, as long as these outstanding items were included.
Right.
In, in your package.
The PAPA hasn't come back yet.
Okay.
But that's, that's the only.
That's the only.
Standing issue is the PAPA, but I'm sure it could be back by now, I'm really not sure.
Okay. I gotta open the public hearing eventually, too.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's all right. Um, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there any comment from the public?
Nathan Titcomb, 12 Polterres. Uh, just like to go on the fact that we've now been waiting on this issue since just about the middle of August, as far as I am aware of it, a little bit before that, actually. The original license application was filed several weeks after that, after the council approved the, I guess, the ordinance. It's my personal opinion that this should have been denied. He never presented a clear package. We still don't have a clear package, and while you're not necessarily voting on a license today, this needs to be resubmitted, so that we, all of my neighbors who are there that may not feel in favor of Mr. LeBeau opening his indoor shooting range, have the opportunity to come. Unfortunately, it should not come down to the concerned citizens like me to inform other citizens. When things have been pushed and moved and everything else, it should come down to a letter being sent to everybody again for a new application. Obviously, you can tell that I'm not very in favor of this shooting range going in this property. I believe that there is a place in Tiverton, but that's just not in this location. Thank you.
Now, Nancy, because it was a continuance, you did not send out any further letters.
No, the abuders were notified, and each time we continued, it was publicly stated with a defined date, which is the process we use for all public hearings.
Any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the public?
Hi, my name's Maureen Morrow. I've attended each hearing leading up to tonight, so I'm not going to repeat other comments that I've made, because I feel like the only way that this could be stopped is on a zoning issue, and that didn't happen unfortunately with the neighbors. The only piece that I still find very puzzling, and I brought this up at the last hearing, is why we have not heard from our chief of police. Just weighing in on an opinion about the safety of a gun range in a high-density area such as what Mr. LeBeau is proposing. And at the close of the last meeting, someone, you know, I can't remember who, but rather very casually said, oh, well, there's nothing built yet, he has nothing to comment on. And I just find, I find it really curious that we have not heard from our chief of police either, and maybe you have, but I think the public needs to hear his views on that. Thank you.
Chief Blakely, I don't know if you're prepared to do that, but.
Actually, I didn't have anything prepared for that, but it's not so much as a law enforcement issue, with whatever the zoning boards decide, the town council's a licensing authority, we would, that's what we take into consideration. Whether I like it there. Whether I like it there or not, I can't. It's not my personal opinion. Not my personal opinion.
Any questions?
Chief?
Yes, please.
Has there been any problems related to his business in town?
His gun, his gun shop, sir?
Has there been any problems where there's been police interaction, because there's been something done by that shop that required. been something done by that shop that required your attention?
No. No. Yes, I have no, I have had no interaction with Mr. LeBeau. May I answer the question regarding safety concerns? Ma'am, if, or anyone in the public, anything to do with firearms, of course, we have safety concerns, and we'd address them if we can, if there's anything that needs to be addressed. What we take into consideration in this particular case, and as well as Tiven, Brown Gun Club, is the safety of the structure. The structures have certain, certain many factors, qualities that they have to meet, and that's what we base this on, as far as safety.
Thank you.
Does the zoning board ask you to repeat?
Excuse me, you have to come up to the microphone. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for council comments, if any. Brett, you wanted to...
Yeah, I just had a question for the clerk. In this packet does not exist two items that are on the checklist. That's the safety plan, including range rules, and the lead management plan. I remember vaguely, actually, not vaguely, I remember distinctly seeing a safety plan. I don't remember a lead management plan, but I don't, I can't say one way or the other if that was part of the original application packet.
So the original application is here.
So while you're getting that, I just have one quick question for Randy. This is on the agenda as a licensing hearing, but you've sort of alluded to, I know you can't grant a license, because there's nothing there. So what is it exactly that you expect out of this process tonight?
I'm expecting you to say, so long as I meet all the requirements that we agreed on while this whole process has been going through, that my license will be granted as soon as, you know, once the range goes in, the safety concerns are met, the lead management is met, the HEPA filters and the whole process is in, gets inspected by the chief, or whoever you guys inspect it, passes all your inspections, and I do everything by the book to the code, then I come back and you guys, I mean, I paid for my first license, which 50 bucks is a drop in the bucket at this point. It's just, that's all I expect tonight, because I can't go spend $750,000 on this thing, and then, you know, you guys say, "Well, maybe we don't want it there," after I spend $750,000. So all I need for you guys to tell me is, I meet all the requirements, my license will be issued. That's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for licensing tonight, because the chief can't inspect something that's not there.
Andy?
Yeah. It can't actually quite work that way. The council can't promise you. What I envision is, the council has three choices tonight. They can vote to deny the license. They can vote to continue it again, or they can vote to grant the license, but it won't be issued to you until you've met all the requirements. And I think if you were so involved-minded to grant it, that's what I envision, similar to what we have with liquor licenses. For example, there was a, with the Red Dory. They were not completed, in fact, the former Buddy's Place, that was another one. You granted the license. They didn't complete the work, therefore, the license was never issued. The Red Dory, they did complete the work, they got all their clarification, state and so forth, and so it was issued. So if you're inclined to approve it, I think you would actually be granting the license tonight, subject to meeting all legal requirements. And I would specifically reference the items, the items that are in the ordinance are automatic. I would also specifically reference the items that were in the development plan review recommendation to you. And then, as indicated, if it meets all those requirements, it's simply a ministerial act to be issued by the clerk. It doesn't come back to the council. That does provide the applicant with some sense of security before spending the money. Likewise, if there's an appeal, which I'm not even gonna speculate as to what procedure that would be, but at least it sets forth the time and starts the clock running, so that people can deal with that issue as well. So I would recommend either granting or denying the license tonight, and then the issuance would be subject to meeting all the requirements.
Madam President, I had the opportunity this afternoon. I came down to town hall and actually met with the fire marshal and the building inspector. They were actually going over the plans, fear of delight. I guess you were coming in later on?
Right. I spoke with both of them today.
Okay. The plans that I seen were very, very vague.
Yep. There was nothing... There hasn't been a plan submitted.
Correct.
So what you saw wasn't a plan.
Right.
Right.
So I guess the request to you was gonna be from them, is to find someone to put together a plan for you.
Correct. Right. And that's more money that I can't spend until this is all set in stone.
But I don't think we can offer you a license until we see that plan and it's approved by the fire marshal.
No, you can't. That's not what we're looking for here. I mean, that's, you're entitled to your opinion, but so you...
Oh, I know.
We're just clarifying that for a minute. We saw a set of plans. They're, the building will be different than the plans that... Alright, so someone has to clarify what we're talking about.
Well, I haven't have, I don't have a complete stamped set of drawings planned yet, and that's what he's referring to. They're not ready yet. I don't wanna go spend that $10,000 to get those plans done until I know, because I've got enough money buried over there right now.
Go ahead, Joe. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But at the planning board meeting, based upon this memo from Kate Micho, that they made a motion to approve the site plan and design plan, conditional upon the four items above. What other plan are you...
Well, just a set of drawings for the fire permit where they want the smoke...
Correct, the stamp blueprint.
Right, the stamp blueprint, right.
That's required by zoning. Any building goes in, you have to have a stamp blueprint. It's a firm plan, it's been, you know, put together by an architect, and it goes as public record.
Mr. Suze is absolutely right. Every plan that comes in for a commercial occupancy must have an architect's stamp on it, to say that it structurally meets the requirements of the Rhode Island Building and Fire Codes. Mr. LeBeau gave us a site plan showing us the building and such. We can't accept it, because we're giving him exactly the same thing that we give every other commercial occupancy. They have to be stamped drawings, and we don't have that, so we can't work off of that without the stamped drawings. That means it has to have an architect's stamp on it, to say that he's looked at them to see that they meet all the codes on their side. And then we look at it, see if it meets the fire code, and then the building inspector will also look at it off of that. But he's being treated exactly the same way that we would do any other commercial occupancy that came in for a permit.
So, so the planning board has a set of plans, and as long as these four items are completed, then they will sign the plan. But you need something beyond that.
Correct. We need something more specific to the building. Show us the structural integrity of the building, the engineering designs for the snow load, the structural integrity of the building, how it's gonna be put together, where the firewalls are, where the electrical is, all of those types of plans, just like we did for the library, just like we've done for everything else.
I'm only bringing this up, because I don't want Mr. LeBeau to go out and spend any money that you don't have to. Because I believe you had a private archery lane that you were gonna use for...
Yeah, that's for me, though. That's not for the public.
That's for you. But according to the fire marshal, it would require different sets of...
Yeah, and all that requires is an eraser, and I'll just get ready for it.
Correct. But I don't want you doing something, and then they're gonna come in later on and say, "Oh, you gotta take that down."
Yeah.
I don't want you, you know, to spend that kind of money.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing going up for that.
Okay.
So all I'm looking for tonight is what the planning board said. For me to move forward, I do everything that you guys put in place, and then issue, like Andy said, I'm ready to go.
So Andy, we could, we could grant this license based on a formal set of plans, go to the fire marshal and get approved. That could be part of our requirements. It is part of it.
Yes. You could, and you could also decide you wanna see more. I mean, that's your purview, was to decide how much detail you wanna see before issuing the license. But you could do it either way.
So as long as Mr. LeBeau know, well, he does know that that's required.
Yeah, I know, I know the plans have to be...
There's really two, there's two elements that he's lumping together. One is the building code issues, and that's where you get an architect, is, you know, the wall's strong enough, the snow load and so forth. And the second thing would be reviewed by the fire marshal, the fire stuff, where's the fire exits, where's the lighting, and so forth. And then, the separate one that will apply specifically here is, where's the lead management plan? And the key thing in the lead management plan is a ventilation control. This building is gonna, the range needs to have negative pressure, basically, that it's a vacuum in there. There's a fan running when it, that sucks the air, so that the lead that's vapor, the lead in the air does not get out to the outside and cause pollution. The lead is sucked in and cleaned and filtered there. That's part of the plans as well. So those are the elements that have to go far and beyond what you have with your plan, is just saying, okay, here's the footprint, and the height of the walls, and where the doors and windows are.
And I think Mr. LeBeau has all that in place. I actually seen that.
Right.
Where, you know, he's gonna have a company come in and put this, comes in like a modular, and they put it together in two weeks.
I haven't, I don't know. That's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. But it's still, it has to go through the process of being approved by, you know, the fire chase and all that.
If I could now, please? Okay. Well, I just, I just wanted to say that I'm looking at a man who owns a business in this town. He's, you know, he's one of those enduring types that can actually come to Rhode Island and open a business with all the obstacles you have to overcome. And I think it's incumbent on this council to support people like Mr. LeBeau, who are trying to expand their business in our town. I realize that a lot of people probably feel those, because guns will be present there. You know, we read in the paper last week about a guy who got pulled over with seven handguns, and some of them were loaded. I dare to say that's not the type of person that's gonna be showing up. Probably all you'll see is people walking in and out with cases, because the weapons are partially disassembled, and ammunition is generally stored in a separate case. There'll be no armed weapons going in and out of this building. The safety procedures are followed by the people that own these weapons, because they don't wanna lose their right to carry. We have some of the strictest laws in the country when it comes to transporting weapons. I heard somebody talking about it in one of the public hearings, and I kinda consider it to be a little bit bigoted. When he talked about, "Where are we going? Are we gonna be driving around like Texans with shotguns in our back windows?" And that's not what anybody's proposing. The people that do target shooting, a lot of them, you know, have served in the military, as I did, and worked. You know, we're on ranges, with safety procedures, with strict, and very few accidents happen in and around these ranges. I can't think of any I've read of in decades, particularly with the strict procedures we have in Rhode Island. This gentleman has asked his council for something, so that he can go forward. A vote by this council will assist him in his financing. A bank will be a lot more apt to give him the financing, if they know that he's, at the other end, he's gonna have a building that can be used. So in order for him to generate, you know, a business plan, I think he needs the support of this council with a vote, and I'll be making the motion to grant the licenses, provided he provides all necessary documents and meets within the guidelines and the laws, you know, provided. That was my motion, as long as Mr. Tights considers that I phrased it properly.
Yep, there you go.
Specifically including the elements set forth in the planning board, in the development plan review recommendation dated December 3, 2014.
As Mr. Tights specified, that'd be my motion.
And I'm sorry, we just, I wasn't ready to do the motion is to approve.
Motion is to approve.
Grant, grant.
Grant, grant.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements, and subject to meeting the additional four requirements set forth in the development plan review recommendation dated December 3, 2014.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Yep, discussion.
Follow-up question. Were those two documents in the packet?
No, I don't have them in. I don't recall them being submitted, but you do, you recall seeing them?
I remember the safety plan.
Do you remember, Gabby, you submitted that? Yeah. I may just not have it in what I've brought forward. This has several folders. I probably did bring it forward in mine. But if it's a requirement, it's gonna have to be there, and...
Here's my concern about the way this process goes. The process of a public hearing is designed to shed light on a licensing procedure and a licensing applicant, or application. And so that neighbors and concerned members of the public can review the documents submitted, and review the application, and there's a period for public input. The virtue of that, to me, somewhat is diluted when we take an application that is missing most of, if not all of, the subject, of the substantive documents, the plans, the safety rules, the lead management plan, all of these requirements that the planning board has required, and just assumes that they will be to standard, or assumes that they will meet a certain criteria, and does not allow them to be reviewed by the public, and does not allow them to be commented on by the public, or questioned by the public. I think that's a really, I don't know how that serves the purpose of a public hearing. And I think it's a bit, as much as I want to make this process easy and straightforward, I also, I want it to make it straightforward and easy for people who wanna understand this more. And right now, I'm concerned about that.
Brett, I turned, everything you just asked for was turned in on day one. Lead management plan, safety plan, action target, everything you just asked for has been turned in on day one. So it's been here for 10 months.
Is lead management, though? Did we ever get that?
Yep, lead management is in there.
I don't remember that.
Everything you asked for, I have turned in.
That's a D E M management.
I just don't remember that, but that...
Maybe tied in with the ordinances. He might have submitted a lot of that at the time we were working on ordinances and stuff.
I didn't leave one piece out. I had the HEPA filter system. Every single piece you just asked for was there.
And every, whatever was ever submitted was always copied and distributed at that time. I'm thinking it might be in the ordinance.
Yeah.
This is the second time we've been asked, in this very short period of this new council, to make a decision based on not having the adequate information in front of us to do so. The first was Cynthia Avenue. We had an agreement that nobody could remember, except me and Andy, I guess. It wasn't in front of us. We didn't know the date of which it was signed, or when it ran through, and we were expected to make a decision on extending it or not extending it. This is the second one. There are items that are fairly major on this list that I remember seeing, and others I don't remember seeing. I don't know what we do about that, but it's very difficult to make decisions based on information that exists somewhere, but not anywhere in this room. And it's even more frustrating, I imagine, for the people out there in the public who don't have as easy access to this stuff.
Will two weeks make a major difference for you, Mr. LeBeau? Will two weeks make a major difference for you?
Oh, not really, but it is...
Can we continue this for two weeks? Put it back on the agenda?
I mean...
And we'll have all the items available for you.
I do have a motion on the floor.
It's been, it's been a year. I'd like to have it settled. If you guys don't want it there, just do it tonight, so I can move on.
There's a motion on the floor, and it's...
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Yeah, but this is still the discussion.
I realize that, but I'm saying that we have to vote now.
We're not gonna vote on that.
Or up.
I'll just question if it's gonna hold them up.
Unless I withdraw. But what are we gonna see in two weeks? We're one of the most heavily regulated industries in the country. I mean, you have federal, state, and local eyes on this business. We've also looked at a motion that would ensure that all of the paperwork that's required, I mean, a lead management plan, that's required by D E M. The doors are not gonna open unless the system is in place. Things like this are gonna be in place.
It's required by the ordinance.
But the bottom line is, this man needs to get out to the banks, he needs to get his business plan together. He's burning time here, and he's burning money. We're costing this man money.
Well, Joe, the way I see it is that if we approve it for him, the next one comes along, and there's information that's missing again, are we going to approve it for them also?
What information is missing? It may not be in our package, but the planning board has reviewed this, there's been an open process through the planning board. I mean, we rely on the planning board to bring, they made the recommendation, the chief has gave us, said that things are going to be taken care of, I don't know what the stall tactic could be.
And my concern, Dave, is that at the next meeting, we're then asking for the engineer's plans, at the next meeting, we're asking for inspection results, at the next meeting, we're asking for the inspector's reports. At some point, somebody's going to have to say, "I just can't spend any more money without getting some assurance that this is going to go forward." I think that's all he's looking for. I don't, I don't know where to draw the line. We can always ask for more material, to the point where he's put up a million-dollar project, and he's coming back still asking for his license. All we're doing here at this point, as I understand it, Mr. Teitz, is we're granting the license, subject to him meeting all of these legal requirements. If he doesn't meet the legal requirements, he doesn't get the license, and Mrs. Mello won't issue him the license.
That's correct, and the license will expire next November 30th. So if he's not built and ready and got all his stuff by then, he's going to have to come back all over again. So it's not going to be indefinite. The clerk has, the clerk does have range safety rules.
Can I get a copy of them, please? I just want to, Jay, you made a good point there. I wanted to, I hate to be the guy that's reminding everybody of everything, but about three months ago, we had this same process, where we had an applicant for a liquor license and a victualling license come in that did not have full plans, was in violation of a zoning code, or may have been in violation of a zoning code, and we were not willing to give that license, subject to meeting all of those legal requirements, because there were so many questions, so many documents still unsubmitted. And we actually requested, or asked them, to withdraw their application with, and we decided without prejudice to reapply at a later date when they had a more concrete and stable plan. So I appreciate the need for expedience on this matter, but I also appreciate that there's a process that the public has designed for us to follow, and it's designed to be transparent and to be, to bring issues if they arise, that's all, I'm sensitive to that.
Well, I have a motion on the floor, and it's seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Motion passed.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And Brett?